Good evening, everyone. You know, stand for the pledge. Well, good evening and welcome again, everyone. As you can see, we're a little short handed, but we're okay and we're gonna hang in there and complete this meeting and we're happy everybody's here. And why don't we start right out by approving the agenda for tonight's meeting?
I'd like to entertain a motion that we approve the regular board meeting agenda for June 6th, 2022.
All in favor? Thank you.
Moving on, entertain a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes from May 16th, 2022.
All in favor? Hi, thank you. College and career readiness. Megan Harvey, Stephanie Miller. You're up.
I can introduce.
Thank you.
Yeah. So for my update this evening, one of the things that we've added to our curriculum and of course, offering the high school level is a career exploration internship program. And that is something that you need to register with New York State to provide at a school district. And it's taught by a business teacher that has the extension, which is Ms. Megan Harvey, who was here tonight to share how her first kind of full swing at this program. And she has brought some students to share their experience. So the first part and the second part is our counseling plan.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. So I had five students this year placing an internship. They had fifty-four hours. For the first semester, fifty-four for the second semester, for a hundred and eight hours and two placements for the most part. Jason was at Hunt.
EAS.
EAS with Sophia and Howard Hannah in Geneseo. Eve was at Howard Hannah and she did a social media marketing in Geneseo. Chloe had two in-school placements. Regina had an in-school placement and one with the town, so. I think it went pretty well this year at least. We also had, as I was going to go to the next slide, seven luncheon learns that with the help of the Jamar Cromers, we were able to offer all students and started out with like five kids. And I found that they really like food. So then you offer dessert, cookies, and then they really like their friends. So then we got up to eighteen by the end of the beginning of May here. These guys would like to do their presentations on where they were, I think.
So I was more interested in the area of architecture and interior design. So I kind of knew what I want to do for college. Ms. Harvey did a great job trying to find us a nice company to work with us. We mostly foreshadow. We visit a lot of project areas. I worked with an architect in the beginning. It took me to certain sites to see their plans, what they were going to do. They also explained to me a bunch of rules that there were when it comes to the architecture part, where there's, if there's like historical work, they need to provide, ask the major and a bunch of other rankings that they need to go over to approve. The plan was just adding a door that was already there. And there was like a bunch of things that you got to do before it. That was interesting. I also ended up working with an interior designer. Her name was Paige. She actually gave me a book to learn about Revit, which is their common program that they use. And you were allowed, I was allowed to like go step by step, go through the website and like I also, I built the floor plan of a building that they have there as an exercise one. And then I went with Jason to the field trip. And they were very nice. The company was very nice. Very together and they involved us a lot, especially during Thanksgiving. And they showed us a couple of sites that they did throughout Rochester. There was a couple houses. They designed the interior part and the exterior. And the main one that caught my eye was the one that was like built in nineteen eighty. Yeah, this house that was like very modern for that time, so yeah.
And then for myself, I focused more on the engineering and a little bit of the business side of it, but mostly engineering. I worked on locating different types of maps, such as the FEMA maps for flooding and all that stuff for certain areas. I visited a solar site and watched how they completed a how they looked in on other companies that they had contracted for areas and see how they worked with them. And then obviously we went, lots of the people in the company learned everything about what everybody did there. And then, as Sophia said, we went around the trip in the area, learned around what's the area, what they've done in the area and how it went.
So my internship center was at the Geneseo town offices. I worked with the town clerk and the deputy clerk, as they're like assistants. My focus, I'm going to school for business administration. So they had me there during tax season, which it started more towards the end of my internship. And although I couldn't put everything in the computers, it was an extra set of hands getting to know what was going on, camping the tax collector books, stuff like that. I also learned different miscellaneous jobs that they had to do, like dog licensing, marriage files. And they're both newer to the positions, so I did a lot of organizing for them in my early weeks of the internship.
Thank you. So my two internships were both at the Geneseo Elementary School. My first one was with Mrs. Droll, who is an English and a second language teacher. I worked with multiple grade levels, kindergarten, first and second grade. Mostly worked with the first graders though. We worked on things like prepositions, when to use amen and other basic grammatical concepts, as well as certain spelling things like silent letters and vowels and consonants. And then for my second one, I worked with Mr. Wedge. And I worked with kindergartners and second graders. We worked on various techniques in basic art history. And I helped with like organizing, cleaning, handing out artwork and helping Mr. Wedge figure out like what to do for the next assignment.
So I did social media marketing and I focused on a lady that worked for a company called Live Tiles. It was to help reach out to different people and try to get them to use. It was a type of software to gain people in social media. And I explored different types of marketing. There was email and digital. She focused a lot on email marketing and trying to sell her software through emails. I attended Zoom meetings with the company's marketing team managers, which helped me gain knowledge on how to work from home because that's where she made me work from. We talked about the marketing agent's roles at campaign events. She did a lot of different type of events and she went to Washington. She talked about what she brought there to help advertise her advertisements. And then we learned more about like professional emailing etiquette and how to send out professional emails. And then I was able to create emails that could be sent off to clients and get more practice. So then me and Jason also did Howard Hannah real estate in Geneseo. We worked on Canva to create open house templates for the agents, which was more importing different templates on Canva. And then they were able to take that and post it on like Instagram, Facebook and market open houses for them.
And then we put together new agent information packets, which helps new agents take the next steps into what they would need to do, once they became a new agent for Howard Hannah.
We had an agent from Dansville ask us to put together information and mail it out. It was like five hundred envelopes and me and Jason did like, it took us a long time, but we did it.
We developed a broker's evaluation sheet for new incoming agents.
We watched a lot of Hannah presentation tool videos and learned how to develop a CMA, which is the current market analysis for properties. We also learned like how to become a new agent because we were able to watch new agents coming into Howard Hannah, get set up there, so that was cool.
And we made price comparison sheets for pending sales and sold sales in last year, which kind of helped us understand what happened and how they went about it and current markets and areas during the past year.
And pretty much we worked on collecting data to showcase the Howard Hannah market share and how much money they were making here.
You get three credits.
Yeah.
So my second placement, Harvey actually had us look for our own. So I think that was a great opportunity for like, just in the real world, you got to find yourself your own job. So I did actually get lucky and found one in town in Cap Design. I worked with Tim and Andrew. Both of them were very nice. The first project guy I ever did with them was a rehab center. They gave me the drawing. I didn't have to put in actual digital. They usually use AutoCAD. So that gave me a nice opportunity to work with the program and get more used to it, which that's the, that's the very common program that architects use. I did went with Andrew over Little sights. Kind of through North Street, there's one homeowner that's trying to extend his house. So we needed to take measurements on the outside. So that was a very cool thing to do. And then they also had me talk to some clients, which I was actually surprised about it, so with the rehab centers, so yeah. Didn't have to do a lot of trips for that, yeah. I mostly worked with Andrew for the most part. He taught me, he was very patient. I got to appreciate his patience for the he edited a couple of the work I did, but in the end, I think it was very worth it to do it. And actually, if you guys would want to, he actually let me take one. He had me adding more, like the boulder ones had the extra walls that he had me drawing. And I basically started from scratch by different of their drawings. So I added the labels, their sizes, and so back and some walls that they did. I've been looking at a lot of these lately.
That is really well done. How you think you might do on this?
Yes, it actually helped me to actually be more confident with it and really went up.
So I've heard, I've heard architecture, engineering, sales, materials, business administration, teaching. Teaching, was it teaching? Elementary teaching, that's what you're focused on? And then social media marketing. Did, did, I said, those were all interests for your potential career. Did you learn anything that pro or con that you, you know, didn't expect to going into it?
The only, sorry, con was the timing. Trying to manage to actually get there, me and Jason, actually, we were lucky enough, our schedules and teachers were very flexible to go to the one all the way in Rochester. So that will be one of the obstacles that some of us had to go through to switch the scheduling. But other than that, I think it was pretty fun.
I would say it definitely helped me narrow down some options. But it was very helpful in the knowledge of what I received from both the internships.
So you had a dual role with engineering and with kind of sales materials.
Yep. So it, it turned the type of engineering that I was interested in, but at the same time, sales is still a big interest in my.
And Regina, we're going to work you hard. I know where you're going.
Yeah.
Any else?
I think that, so the first internship I did was social media marketing, but I really enjoyed Howard Hannah. And definitely think that real estate is what I'm going to do, so it helped me figure out a lot what I want to do.
I was impressed with the sales materials we pulled together. That's great. That's got to help them for all the new agents.
Yeah, it was really, they already had like two new agents coming in, so we got to see them.
About teaching, it didn't scare you away?
No. I definitely prefer working with Mrs. Droll if you get Falcon. I want to be more of like an interpreter and a teacher.
I, I still have trouble with prepositions, maybe you can.
Great, fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
It's a wonderful opportunity that you, that you're being provided to have this internship as a piece of that curriculum. So thank you to Mrs. Harvey and Miller for what you've done to get this in place. It's, it's awesome that they can get the career experience.
Yeah, absolutely. And it started, I don't know who was on the, some people may be here in 2019, twenty, when we started the culture with education to employment and I brought Megan along. And that's where we were really trying to explore, what are some additional opportunities for students? You know, we had some great things in place, but how can we further create some opportunities? So it's a, it's a good starting point. And I know a lot of hard work goes into finding placements, you know, checking in with the mentors and paperwork and tracking hours and things like that on the backend. It was nice that we had a small group to start and hopefully we can just continue to build from here.
Yeah, this is, this is great. I can't tell you the number of students I talked to as they get ready to graduate from college, who are still trying to figure it out. And the earlier you can, you know, get some foundation and kind of understand, the better it's going to be for you.
Absolutely. You know, Mrs. Harvey, this was a new program and she has ran with it. So thank you for these opportunities for our students and nice job for going out and representing Geneseo and being such a positive and professional man.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, you are more than welcome to stay for the entire board. But then you're also free to go, so.
We'll be here till about eleven, so. Okay. The counseling division.
Yeah, the next piece of this, as you can see, there's a lot that goes into career planning. And we have a counseling plan, so both Becky K. and Teresa Holt are here to share. Not a whole counseling plan, quite a lengthy document, but wanted to highlight the connection with careers and also our focus on social emotional learning, which I know many of you have heard about.
And I'm Teresa Holt, and I'm Becky K., the elementary counselor. And Suzanne was not able to join us, but she will hear from later in the slideshow. So I'll start, and I'm sure you all know, but this, this is our, our mental health team, our people personality team, myself, Teresa, Suzanne. The two school psychologists are part of our team and then the social worker that I'm understanding is going to be the proof to see things. The counseling plan has to be overseen and written by a certified school counselor, but those people are part of our team and have roles within it, as do the classroom teachers. So although it's a counseling plan, it's really much more comprehensive and just plus three. And just to give you an idea, these are our current case loads and counselors. Recommended is two fifty. You can see we have different needs. We're very grateful that a social spirit is coming because we think that can really help our team. But those are our current case loads. They vary up and down and enrollment changes throughout the year.
Sorry, I can't read the numbers there.
Oh, it's, well, I can't read this far either. I know mine.
Three forty-eight in the middle school or elementary, two seventy-three and then one ninety-one?
Yeah. Yeah, one ninety-one. So I just wanted, we just pulled these right out of the counseling plan. These are the six major, the five major objectives with lots of information underneath them in terms of how we work towards meeting those objectives, annual reviews, prepare students successfully, participate in their future educational plans. The way it is on between the school and all the outside agencies and then the annual review of our plan. We're going to highlight, like Ms. Miller said, college and career readiness at each level and a little bit about social emotional learning. And just so you know, if you do want to look at the whole plan, it is on the website. There's a link right there. It's off of our counseling page. All right, so the elementary school. Every student K five has a career folder or a career plan. Every year I go into each classroom and we talk about the things that they do well, the things they need to practice, what their interests are. And then another big piece of it is just exposure to different occupations. Like we'll just talk about, I've got an A B C job book or a Z job book. And so what does a scuba diver do? And so just a variety and let them pick. And then the last piece is that they talk about what I want to be when I grow up. So all of these papers are in their folder. When I go to, from first grade to second grade, they'll pull them out, look at them and they'll look and say, wow, I still like to do this. They still need to work on this. Oh, my gosh, last year I wanted to be an astronaut. This year I'm going to be a princess. And I don't ever tell them that they, that any of those choices aren't okay. And we often have a lot of conversation about, I know you said like people get out of college and they can't figure out what they want. I talk about the fact that I probably had six jobs after I graduated from college. And it's okay not to know what you want to do when you leave high school, but to just have some options. And I think the other big thing that I've really tried to talk a lot about lately is because so many kids say, I'm going to go to college, I'm going to go to college. And so I just spend time talking about what your options are. You don't have to go to college. College isn't for everybody. I say some people get a job right out of high school and wait and see what they want to do. I talk about the armed forces and I've really had a big push lately about the trades. Because Suzanne will speak to this as well. I think that they've kind of gotten a bad rap. And so I'm really trying to talk that up a little bit and then we talk about college. And then this career stuff is all in the curriculum. So the classroom teachers do some of it as well, particularly at second grade. They do their own little mini career fair because it's community helpers. And then the culminating activity for us is in fifth grade, which is the career day. And then Teresa and I work on that together. It's always in the fall. It's fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth graders. We solicit parents, you know, Teresa can point to that. But I don't know if we can click on my friend Ian Amati. He was very.
Hi, my name is Ian Amati and I'm in fifth grade. And at the beginning of the year, we had career day and I got to learn about different careers. Mrs. Kay asked people with different careers to come in and we went around to different rooms and learned about the different careers. Hi, my name is Ian Amati and I'm in fifth grade. And at the beginning of the year, we had career day and.
So at the middle school, like Becky said, you know, our goal is to provide information on different careers and the skills and education that's needed for those particular careers. Middle schoolers can be a tough audience. If you've ever been in a middle school classroom, keeping their attention for longer than ten minutes is a challenge. But so we try to get volunteers who represent as many of the Holland codes, of the career codes that we can, so realistic or hands-on careers. Investigative or scientific, artistic, social, enterprising, having to do with business. Conventional is more like following a rule. So like, you know, office manager might fall into that. And we want to have them in high interest. I have found over the years, if it's too far out of their knowledge range, they really just kind of check out. So you know, the more hands-on the kids can see, the better it is. We also like to have people who know what it's like to talk to middle schoolers. So we pick people who are parents, alumni and people who just have experience with that. And then at the end, our culminating activity is to have the E L A teachers teach them how to write a formal thank you letter, which is a valuable skill. So just to give you a little sample, these are all the career speakers, but Randy French, he's a retired science teacher and a business owner. Sam Tenelli is a parent and a paramedic. Laura Nelson, she's a pathologist. She's a friend of mine. It was hard to find a doctor, but she does this from time to time. So the kids were able to see their lab and a lot of kids didn't actually know what a pathologist was, so it was an opportunity. And then Emily Morgan is G C S alumna. And she is a social media influencer. So when I was presenting to the kids, you know, what this is, I said, when Emily was here, this wasn't a career. So you know, by the time they get into the workforce, there will be new careers. The workforce, you know, with COVID and everything has changed. So I always say we're, we can't just teach one career. It's really, what are the skills and how do you gain the knowledge? And the experiential piece, I think, especially as we get older, is really key. In addition to that, other career exploration activities happen in Career and Tech. This is the first year we had Career Tech because we had Home and Careers prior to that. And then Career Tech Eight, and then Mr. Harvey mentioned the High School Luncheon Learns. Those are fairly new. We started those last year. I know that Mr. Scoreleader used yourfreecareertest.com. Mrs. Hodgman and I use the NY Career Zone. So there's assessments in there. The Career Zone does go by the Holland code and it will give kids a code and then some jobs to look at from them. Another piece to our career development, one of, at this level, kids are coming into the middle school. They're usually like ten, eleven. When they leave me at ninth grade, they're like fourteen, fifteen. So the, the part that we're focusing is that self-assessment. Who am I? What do I like? What are my strengths? So we do have to do individual progress reviews. This is a fairly new requirement for counselors, so we have to meet with every student individually for a progress review. And that's where we will ask them to identify some of their interests and what they're thinking of, identifying their strengths. As I mentioned, we have to touch on the academic, social and career domain. For the younger kids who don't have a lot of choices, it can take twenty minutes. For students who are a little bit older and we're doing course selection, it can take up to an hour. We try to give kids what they need and families what they need. And then if you want to show a sample. So this is the sample form that I use when I meet with ninth graders. So developing that self-awareness, if you want to keep scrolling. So I ask them, what do you like this year? What's your favorite class? What's hard for you? What are your personal strengths? What are some things you're good at? I say, are you creative? Are you organized? Are you athletic? So they, they identify that. Because I meet with them in eighth grade and review graduation requirements. I ask them, what are you thinking of in terms of your diploma status? You know, keep scrolling. We talk about their goals, what their goals are academic typically. And then can you scroll back up for a sec? I do ask them to identify and I use checkboxes. So I say, you know, you can pick as many as you want because you know, you're fourteen, you don't have to know everything. When I go into the classroom, because before I do these progress reviews at ninth grade, I go into the classroom and I talk about each one. So sometimes they really don't know what a bachelor's degree is or what a two-year college means. So we talk about some of those things so they could start to get a handle on those. And then we look at, you know, their attendance, their grades. And we get, we actually check school tools and they're pretty honest, so. And then we look at, at the ninth grade level, are they on track? What helps them? Where do they get at school that helps them? What kind of things work for them in terms of being a student and do they need any additional help? Then we choose courses and then we touch on social emotional coping skills, having an adult to talk to, thinking about how they are with friends. And then we give an activity resume at, once you start the high school level. So that's actually the art of practicing your resume. And we have a Google form that we share with the student, with the parent if they want. I share it with Suzanne because she'll have them the next year. And then I ask them to pick some careers. And so we do that with every student on their level, grade six through twelve, because the progress reviews are required, grade six through twelve. So that's just a sample. So with the high school program, I think as we mentioned, with the Sholand, the high school counselor couldn't be here. So she did a recording for us.
Hi, this is Suzanne Sholand. I'm the school counselor at Geneseo and I work with students in tenth through twelfth grade. My presentation tonight is going to focus on college and career readiness. This is a list of activities that students are exposed to during their high school career here at G C S that all kind of fall under that umbrella. um that all kind of fall under that umbrella of college and career readiness and help to prepare them for um whatever it is that they choose to do after high school. When we talk about college and career readiness, really we're talking about students exploring their interests, identifying their strengths and then connecting that to careers and also college majors, um, sometimes both that they um want to pursue after they leave us, um, when they graduate high school. But instead of just kind of looking at the activities themselves, I wanted to show some data that we really look at to measure um how we're doing in this. So the first uh chart here shows our B O C's Career and Tech enrollment. Um, Geneseo, uh, well, this this shows the percentage of the graduating class that has participated in at least one year of a B O C's Career and Tech program, although most students do complete the full two-year program. Um, our Genesee Valley B O C's has a wide range of program options. Um, so students are really fortunate that they have a lot to kind of consider and choose from. Um, and typically enrollment has remained quite steady at Geneseo. Around a quarter of the graduating class um participating in B O C's. Uh, but that was actually doubled this year with our current juniors. Um, more than half of the class was enrolled in a B O C's program this year. Um, and I think that that's excellent. It definitely um prepares them extremely well for pursuing a career in the skilled trades, but also can definitely launch them on to further education, whether that's a trade or a technical school, a community college or a four-year program that's related to their career field. Um, they really have a wide range of choices after completing a B O C's program. Um, and I do think part of this is that fortunately and finally, the national conversation has kind of treaded trended towards greater acceptance and greater encouragement of um students pursuing the skilled trades. So um, I do hope that this trend continues and that students feel um comfortable and encouraged to pursue this if this is something that they want to do. Um, but to hear more um or to tell you more rather about their experiences, uh, we have a few students.
Uh, my first name is Emily and I'm a love grade. Um, some of my experiences with those seasons have been very eye-opening and enlightening. I really enjoy the whole process of doing things. Um, I've learned very much social skills. I'm in cosmetology and it's very helpful to know social skills. So it gets me started for the future. Um, my future plans are barbering and I've done a lot of clipper cuts in cause. So it helps a lot and I just genuinely enjoy all of those.
So I'm Alex Adams Prez. I'm a senior from Geneseo Central School. I do auto body. I've been doing it for two years. Um, I like the trade just because I can make the car look however I want. And um, after high school, I plan on working with my dad at a auto tech shop to strengthen my skills there as well as use auto body and eventually I want to own my own job.
And then the other piece of data that I wanted to um present tonight is our A P enrollment data. So A P is Advanced Placement Coursework. Geneseo offers a wide range of courses, anything from A P Psychology to A P Studio Art to A P Computer Science Principles. So um, there's really something for everyone. Um, and this chart shows the percentage of students in the graduating class that took at least one A P course um sometime throughout their high school career. And for Geneseo, this um does fluctuate a bit, but it kind of holds steady around two-thirds of the graduating class. Um, the courses, you know, really prepare students well for furthering their education after high school. Um, and to tell you a little bit more about that, we have a senior.
I'm Emily Sullivan and I am currently a senior. And my experiences with A P have started in my sophomore year when I took A P World. And from then I've continued and at the end of my senior year, I've taken eight A Ps total. So from these classes, I think I've really gained time management skills. Um, I've gotten really good at like sectioning my time, making sure that I study and understand the content and not just memorize. And I think that's really important and invaluable. And so I'm really hoping to apply at my future at T E S University where I'm hoping to study clinical psychology. And I think that the course load and the content of A P and how thorough and extensive and like fast pace it is, is really going to help me in college and keep me from getting overwhelmed in my first few years.
And one thing that I did mean to say, and I moved on too quickly, but um the A P enrollment data, that is actually directly connected uh to the U S News and World Report high school rankings. So um, the the percentage of students who enroll in one A P course before they graduate high school, that makes up 30% of the formula that U S News and World Report uses. So just kind of interesting aside, I know I've been curious as to how they come up with those rankings. And um, this is a big piece of that uh calculation. So anyway, back to um the presentation here. So kind of putting all of this data together, um, this year for the first time, I was curious to see um, how many students have completed at least a year of a B O C's Career and Tech program and/or an A P course and/or a career internship. You just heard about um Megan Harvey's Career Internship Program. I think that that is an excellent addition to our college and career readiness offerings here at Geneseo because it is very rare, but if there is a student or two here or there who does not um find what they're looking for in a B O C's Career and Tech program and they're not really interested in an A P course offering, that career internship provides an excellent way to still um give them access to and get the experience um and the the career exploration um in a uh pretty intensive program. So um, the class of 2022, I am pleased to say that 45 of the 50 students, 90% have completed at least one um or more of those offerings. Um, my goal, of course, would be 100% um and I will continue to work towards that. But um, this gives me good um confidence in knowing that students are are being um provided experiences that do help to prepare them for uh their future after high school. So um, thank you so much for allowing me to present tonight. And if you have any further questions or if there's um other information that you are curious about, um, feel free to reach out and I'm happy to share that at any time. Thanks so much. Hi, this is Suzanne.
So that was the highlights of our uh. Um, so that was the uh Career and College Readiness, K through 12 in a nutshell. And then now we're going to just highlight the social emotional learning, which has been a big initiative for our role this week.
So Stephanie um worked tirelessly to get this panorama into the building and the survey working. And she worked again and harder and longer. And finally, in about November, it was up and running. And so everybody, I'm I'm just going to speak to us. Um, everybody in grades three through five took this. There's not a K-12 component. And honestly, um, we're redoing it now as well this week. Um, the questions can be kind of tricky, so we read the questions to the kids and make sure they understand it and put it in language that they can get. And then there's a scale. Um, but as you can see from this piece, um, the school climate, school safety, sense of belonging, teacher-student relationships and valuing of school, all of our scores are in the green. So those third through fifth graders feel like their teachers care, that the school is a positive place to be. Um, so that was very encouraging data. And then the second one doesn't look as good. Um, but I want to talk about, you know, challenging feelings, like how they manage them. And then the emotional regulation, we're coming off of a pandemic. Kids are struggling figuring out and the questions are like, when somebody is unkind to you, are you able to walk away and let it go? Not so much. And it's stuff that we're working on. Um, and the the grit question, there's one question. How likely are you to work on a goal for over three months? Now, what eight-year-old do you know is going to work on a goal for three weeks, let alone three months? So that, to me, that that is skewed, um, because that's um, and then self-management and then the social awareness is just being aware of your peers. So I think overall, we're in a good place. We definitely have some things that we need to work on, um, which we'll talk about how we're working on them in a minute.
And at the middle school, high school, you can see, we definitely have some areas that we want to work on. Um, and I always say, a survey is a snapshot in time, right? So the kids were doing this in the fall. We were still experiencing masks and um, you know, absence due to COVID and things like that. So trying to get back to a normal school year, I think kids, you can see, generally felt safe. But we want to continue to work on our uh climate and our culture and fostering a sense of belonging and relationship. So it gives us good data that that's what we want to continue to work on. Um, and I think, you know, if you have a child who's an adolescent, they are different than when you're in a classroom altogether. Middle school and navigating the social relationship can be a little bit more difficult.
Um, so again, just a quick snapshot in terms of what we're doing, um, K-12 to address this. So in the elementary school, we've started Second Step, which is a can social emotional curriculum. It's really easy to use, started out paper. And now we've got the digital version. Thank you, Stephanie. Um, those Second Step lessons are the responsibility of the classroom teacher. So there's, it depends the scope and sequence. Some grade levels have like 28 to 30 lessons. They tend to be 20, 20 minutes in length.
Becky, can you define Second Step?
So it's just the name of the program, Second Step. So there's other ones. That's just what this one's called.
Okay.
So it's called Second Step. You can look it up online and all the, and Teresa has a snapshot of the scope and sequence of each grade level is different. Um, so our goal is that next year, make a time in the schedule to to ensure that those lessons get done with fidelity because the day gets away from teachers. And um, that is something that Kelly and I have talked about how to make that happen. So there's not a reason not to get it done. And then in addition to that, if there's gaps or there's teachers that are struggling with a certain thing in class, I will push into the classroom and do lessons as well based on their need. Um, but and then, you know, even further down the road, we want to make sure that the special area teachers and, you know, dream would be bus drivers cafeteria, people are using the same language, but we're not there yet. Um, but we do have a really strong tier one social emotional learning, which is our gold blue thing. And so then this just kind of is like a tier two, tier one. If no, it's tier one because it's everybody, but it's just another layer.
So I think I mentioned this before, but uh in the middle school, uh, we've only used digital. I first implemented Second Step, which really is just the brand name for this social emotional curriculum that we're using. It makes it easier because it's prepared and it has some scientific backing to show that it's effective. Um, so I obtained the the first year through a grant through our Livingston County Council on Alcohol and Substance Abuse. Um, and I taught that with as much fidelity as I could during hybrid and remote learning. So some lessons I did with Zoom, um, some I did in person. And Paul Cass, there was at the sixth grade level, like teachers who allowed me to come into classroom and make time for that. It was really great. And then um, we have it again. And this year, teachers did more of the implementation. So we really split it at sixth, seventh and eighth grade. So we've done it collaboratively, kind of like Becky said too. I will occasionally go in and do additional lessons, like I did one on empathy. Um, it just depends on the needs of the students. And then at the high school level, um, the English department has started to integrate some social emotional learning uh lessons in their classroom curriculum. It seems to, with all the literature and things, it seems to fit well there. And I did have a student who said she liked Second Step, so.
I like Second Step because it made me realize that there's more strategies to use when it comes to handling bullying. I like Second.
Um, I couldn't get the whole uh scope and sequence, but if you can kind of see, it's broken down by unit one is mindset and goals, which kind of is a great start to the year. Um, and then managing bullying and harassment. We spent a good amount of time uh talking about what that looks like. Um, and then thoughts, emotions and decisions, and then managing relationships and social conflict. So each grade level has a specific lesson that goes under those units. Just a sample, when you ask middle schoolers their opinion, they're pretty honest. So I had, this was about mid-year, I had asked, you know, what do you like? Um, pardon me, I like everything. We don't have to do classwork. Um, some could say they like, they like it. For the most part, it's been pretty positive. I think they're accepting that this is part of what we do. Um, and so we want to continue to uh keep pushing forward with that. So in terms of other requirements on on our counseling plan, we do have an advisory council. Um, this is a a council that needs, um, we're going to meet next week. It is comprised of us as counselors, um, parents and uh teachers and a couple of mental health professionals. Kathy Batino Bondi is our board member and Stephanie has agreed to be our administrator this year on the team. So what we'll do is look at any data, um, and you know, how we want to update the plan and anything we want to focus on. And lastly, um, this kind of, all of this has kind of led to where are we going? So we want to continue to work with our team, teachers and administration to increase tier one positive behavioral support at the middle school, high school level, to continue to foster that sense of belonging and respect and inclusion. Um, continue to plan with teachers for the full implementation of Second Step lessons um in the elementary and in the middle school. Uh, we had a sub in for sixth grade, uh, social studies for a good part of the year, so it was a little bit slow start there. So continuing to uh hit every lesson um and continue to increase the lessons at the high school level. Another initiative on my part is to collaborate with the middle school um career and tech teacher to uh increase the portion of the career-related activities at the middle level. The students have Career and Tech six and Career and Tech eight every other day for the whole year. So it's a lot of time to be able to develop that program. Um, of course, we want to integrate our so uh school social worker into our team, particularly with tier three um support and intervention. So those may be the students who need a lot of case management and time to to be successful at school. Um, if we can do that, then we can increase our counseling groups that are focused on the uh American School Counseling Association um mindset and behavior. So we can target a little bit more individually or like in small groups. And then always trying to increase our use of data to inform our programs, whether it's the surveys or attendance or discipline um for our tiered intervention. So those are a couple of highlights from the plan and we thank you for your support. And if you ever have any questions, feel free to ask. I was going to do a little Second Step lesson, but I thought it was. If you want to, I can come back. If you guys have any questions.
Oh, yeah, I'm kind of interested in your thought and your opinion regarding the survey that, you know, they had some. They weren't all green dots or had a few red dots, but you had mentioned it was given in the fall and there's still one with masks and there was still this aura of COVID around and this uncertainty. Do you think the outcome would have been any different in that survey if it was given again in the spring?
We're giving it this week.
This week?
This week. I did two classrooms today. I am, I am interested to see. And I think I can only speak for my building. I, and and like Teresa said, it's different. There was one teacher all day long. So that sense of belonging and caring is is just naturally higher. But I think in terms of those other ones that were in the red, in their own emotional regulation, I'm not sure. I've been here a long time and kids' ability to manage their emotions has dramatically dropped off. And so that's where Teresa talked about the the data driving our um instruction. And so then my goal would be, is to do some more smaller group or more in-classroom work next year to really try and target those areas that we're struggling with. Because Second Step does, but again, like it's, you just run out of time to do everything you can. So with mandated mandated time in the schedule for teachers to get through those lessons and then additional support, small group and classroom stuff, I'm pretty optimistic next fall they'll look better.
You know, the question you stated that some of the kids were struggling. You know, coming off of the COVID and such like that, do you think that's this uh K-12 private collective bowl or is it certainly definitely it's every age group?
Um, I think it's pockets in each grade level and at each grade level, it um is presented differently. This fifth grade group we have, I have sworn I would never be a middle school counselor. It's the new sixth grade, like. It's the new sixth grade, like drama every day. And so they're just, again, just their inability to manage. Kindergartners are having a lot more trouble keeping their hands to themselves, like when they get frustrated or pushing, which is not typical. So it's, you know, each grade level is different, but there's groups for sure.
Yeah, and I think time will tell, right? And we need to support all of our students. We definitely have students who struggle, students who lack resources. I think we've been very grateful to have a therapist in the building to refer to. So we are trying to help, you know, all students function to the best they can. So I'm hopeful that with next year, starting out with everything, you know, a little bit more typical in school, that our, our kids will feel good about where they are. And we'll keep working and that's where the data, like Becky said, helps us drive our program.
Thank you. My compliments to all of you on the career tech progress. I really, it's tremendous, okay? And certainly seeing, you know, our, our students be excited about that is, is really hope. I, I, in terms of the social emotional learning side and, and any potential learning gaps or whatever we call learning losses, you know, I, at some point, do we have enough data to kind of map it over time to see from a board perspective, what we can do to help?
Well, we just started Panorama, so that's the hard data that we have. So I would say the answer is yes, as long as we continue to, to use it. And I know Teresa and I both, like during the pandemic, did our own check-ins with kids, so it wasn't like standardized data. But, you know, we were on top of that as well.
We're all still learning what's, what the impacts from, you know, the pandemic were. We see it at different levels, so. I look forward to see how the, the data helps us.
I think the hard data might refers to the amount of mental health arrests we've had and parties and accidents. I think that's a real hard data. The survey did great, but it doesn't tell you the whole picture.
Yeah, it can give you kind of a big perspective or a broad perspective, but you're right. That other data is.
That's a hard data.
And I think the hard data speaks to how a kid is actually functioning. Do, are you able to get up and come to school? Are you able to learn versus, you know, reporting how I feel and what I see? So yeah, I think the hard data is easier to obtain, but we're building the other data.
And we see it in our faculty, we have our discussions in our faculty meetings that we see coming out of high school and entering college, the impacts to some degree.
As you do these surveys, like when you're doing now and when you're going to do in the fall, will you be sharing the data? Like maybe alongside with what we have now that we can see?
If that's a request, it would be more than that.
Well, just to see the improvement that we hope is going to be there.
Stephanie's all over.
Delegate.
Thank you. Thank you both. It's good to see you both. I have pleasant memories when I was playing a different role. At Geneseal Center, you were both so supportive of me in transportation. Becky, it was typically at the tail end of the day during the loading process and things fell apart and you were there.
I'm still there.
And Teresa, we did career day together, but you've obviously stepped that up a notch. But I, I would come in and we'd have to take kids all over the place and you'd have it all mapped out. And I thought your rooting skills were better than mine. But, but you always declined a, a transfer to my department.
Well, I think you helped keep my anxiety in check, right?
We had a good time.
We didn't lose any kids. I will say, I want to give a shout out to Jay Ballard because he is so good. He is flying whenever we need something. And, you know, we have had some kids struggle. We've done probably more home visits than normal. He really is very flexible and carrying on the tradition, so we appreciate that.
Thank you for that. Thank you both.
You know, one of the things that we've talked about throughout this school year is how much the pandemic and COVID has impacted teaching. You can see the impact it's had on the, the mental health team as well. Not only are they trying to continue with those counseling career goals and that social emotional learning, but just there's a lot of crisis and there's, it's changed what they do on a daily basis, so.
Yeah, I think I've done home visits this year and then probably in the last ten.
Just looking at the sheer numbers, I don't know how you manage the workload.
But we do good work. We make a difference. Well, like you said at the beginning, it really takes everybody, you know, the comprehensive counseling plan doesn't happen without teachers, without administration. So it really is a whole team effort. And as I tell the middle school kids, it's like, I, you know, we all make the school climate what it is. So it's not just one person. It's you. It's how we all treat each other. So, so it's a, it's a team.
And we definitely have a lot of administrative support, for sure. Kelly lets me go to home anytime.
Thank you so much. That was great. So now we'll switch to the superintendent.
Yeah, we'll, we'll continue with good news. So if you get a chance to look out back, our field of dreams, the church part of the field is completed. We're moving the bleachers back and moving out, bringing out the rest of, of that dirt that's all piled up. But just really want to commend our LG Evans, our contractor. He came in and just, you know, made a decision that this was going to get done, done well, and it is absolutely beautiful. So Gary, please share our compliments and how pleased we are with, with that project. So then that leads us to the next part where we do know that our gym and steam space work is continuing. So we are planning the demolition of the small gym and that will start as soon as students are out of the building and after graduation. So that is our plan for that area. And then we are in the process of the auditorium instructional space review. So we did meet with the finance department. We had that $2 million that we originally talked about after our, our budget ended with the rails there for a little bit. We stuck to that $2 million budget and we have re-meet with the finance department to verify that the plans include what they have identified as priorities. And they have. So we are planning to have those bids prepared for the end of August to go out, to have contractors bid on and to move forward with that process. We recently had our budget vote. And one of the things that we wanted to do is we've been keeping track of the times and number of people who are voting. So you can see, we start at 6:00 AM and we go to 9:00 PM. And on the average, between six and eight o'clock, you know, we're in that fifty to forty range. Or, you know, not a lot of voters coming in. And you really see the highlighted times from nine until eight PM. That's when we see the most interest in, in our voting. So when we look at what other schools have done, you can see that most schools have either a one to eight, twelve to nine, seven to nine, you know, what are, what are those polling? And we really feel that an eight to eight time would allow our residents to be here who want to come early in the morning and who have to come after work to have that time. So we are recommending, based on that information, that we go to eight to eight. There is regulations that say you have to have six consecutive hours of voting and two of those hours must be after 6:00 PM. So we couldn't have a poll close any sooner than 8:00 PM. So again, really recommending next year, and we will do a board resolution. I just wanted to give you the information to consider. If it's a direction that you would like to move in, you can certainly have that board resolution prepared. But our recommendation would to move to eight AM to eight PM voting full time. And, you know, we hear wonderful things about our students. Our high school team was world champions. They are world champions. They were first at Worlds. And our middle school team came in sixth. So once again, a tremendous performance by our O two nine teams, the first time back in person and, and they had a wonderful time. So congratulations to them. Mr. Salatell is looking forward to getting out of here soon tonight, so we can go and pack and leave at, at 7:00 AM. Is that the leave time, Mr. Salatell, for the?
About eight.
Senior trip? So that, the senior trip is, is going. Excited for them to have that opportunity, first time in two years. So it, it seems like things are getting back to, to normal. And of course, we have to talk about school safety. School safety is our number one priority. The administrative team continually discusses safety protocols. And it's, it's never a conversation that once you've had it, you're, you're done. It's just, what can we constantly do to improve? Officer Bredo is doing more routine checks of the doors in the school property. And we're asking her for her feedback, any kind of informal safety audit information that she could provide to us. Then the Livingston County Superintendent's on a quarterly basis, they meet with all of the law enforcement in, in the region. So our Geneseal PD there, Livingston County Sheriffs and the New York State Troopers. And we just talk about different scenarios, the, the sheriff's office who has access to all of our cameras in our school, they, they tell us what would be helpful if we ever did have a situation here where they had to get here and get to a certain location. So not sharing a lot of what they shared with us because we want to keep some of those plans confidential. But it's good to have that law enforcement perspective shared with the school superintendents because they, they look at school safety in a much different lens than we do. So just very grateful for the partnership that we have with all the law enforcement agencies in our area. After the incident in Texas, we did have increased law enforcement on, on, on the grounds. They were doing drive-throughs, so really doing what they could to help support us during those times. So again, ongoing and, but just know that it is a focus and it's something that we do take very seriously. Any questions?
Relations, um, no sign up to speak. Okay, thank you. Right, no, no committee reports.
No, I don't believe we're meeting.
You see, yeah.
They should be delivering their cards momentarily.
It's very nice.
So that's the personnel, which brings us to personnel.
Let them in a consent motion for items under personnel for items six point zero two to six point one five.
Any questions on any of those? A lot of, a lot of movement here. Yeah.
Six point one six, not six point one five.
That must have got added since.
What is that one? Is it a full service worker that actually?
Okay, it's not in the first list. Six point one six.
Questions on any of those?
I just want to thank the administrative team when you, when you have a personnel agenda that long, that means there's been a lot of interviewing, a lot of work on their end. And one of the things that everyone on the administrative team does really well is they make sure that that process is, is thorough. Applications are checked, interviews are conducted and then all references are checked. So it's a very thorough and complete process. If needed, we do sample lessons, so really want to commend the team. It's a lot of work to hire and correctly, and they do.
Indeed. Thank you. Thank you. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Anyone oppose? Unanimous, thank you.
Under business, let them obtain a consent motion for items seven point zero two through seven point one five.
Questions on any of those?
The only question I have was on, um, seven point oh four. Seven point, oh, sorry, seven point oh five. If the date, the date are July twenty twenty one. If that initial date is, we're approving some back then.
So yes, what we're doing is we're paying last, so we're paying for a student who was in a private school all of this year. So it starts July twenty one and ends this June.
Okay, so yeah, and then it was seven point oh four too. So, okay, I'm just making sure to be accurate. Thank you.
No, Fred, we're here to welcome the data under seven point one five.
Pick that up. Anything else? All in favor of those items, say aye. Aye. Anyone oppose? Unanimous, thank you. Brings us to business office.
The business office has, I think, consent looking at things. Eight point zero one and eight point zero two. Confusing.
Okay. Okay, question on that. No, you're good? Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye. All right, aye. No one oppose? Thank you. And it brings us to discussion moments.
And so you, you, yes, you have the data that I presented on the election voting hours. It's something that you can further discuss now. We can put it on a future for agenda for discussion.
Guys. I think eight to eight is fine and it looks like a lot of the districts do less than that. And so as far as I'm concerned, I recommend we put it as an agenda item next time. Sounds good.
Second session.
Like to entertain a motion that we enter into executive session to discuss two contract issues and the superintendent's. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone.